Members, we will start this session on culture, tourism and sports. We welcome Mr. Kevin Young and his team. Now, if you would like to speak, please press the button. I will first invite Mr. Kevin Young to give us a briefing. Thank you.
Chairman, thank you. Members, I know you are all excited and waiting to ask questions. Please let Mr. Young take the floor first. Mr. Chairman, I briefly introduced the key tasks under the Culture, Sports, Tourism and Creative Industries portfolios in the current financial year. In General Secretary Xi Jinping's important speech at the twentieth National Congress, he emphasized the importance of promoting cultural confidence and strength, continuously growing the country's cultural soft power and appeal of Chinese culture, tell the good stories of China and making China's voice heard. The fourteen-five-year-plan supports Hong Kong to develop into an east-meets-west center for international cultural exchange. The Culture and Tourism Development Plan for the GBA also states the support for Hong Kong to develop into a more competitive international cultural exchange hub. This Culture, Sports and Tourism Bureau will continue to allocate necessary resources to promote arts and cultural development and to dovetail with the country's directions in cultural development. This will give play to the advantages of Hong Kong as melting port of Chinese and Western cultures and leverage on our rich cultural resources to fulfill our role as an east-meets-west center for international cultural exchange. The government allocates fifty million dollars each year to promote cultural exchanges and collaboration amongst Hong Kong mainland overseas culture institutions, support Hong Kong's arts groups and artists to perform in stage exhibitions outside Hong Kong. The government will provide a total of one hundred and thirty-five million dollars over five years from twenty twenty-three, twenty-four for continuing to support for performing arts groups, artists in Hong Kong to take part in performances and productions in the GBA, to strengthen connection with collaborative partners in the area, to develop more platforms for performances and cultural exchanges, and to facilitate the integration of arts and culture in the region. It is expected that one thousand local artists and production staff will be involved, attracting attendance of forty thousand in the GBA each year. The government will allocate twenty million dollars to organize the Greater Bay Area Cultural and Arts Festival in twenty twenty-four. This month-long arts festival will be planned and organized by the LCSD. In addition to curating a large-scale opening event, over one hundred high-quality cultural and performing arts activities will be organized. It is expected that the festival will involve over five thousand participating artists and art groups and attract live audience of about a hundred and forty thousand. The first Hong Kong pop cultural festival will be launched officially in the end of this month with a budget of twenty million dollars. LCSD will bring to the audiences an array of program experience, showcase Hong Kong's distinctive cultural characteristics, diverse, inclusive creativity, charisma, as well as promote the development and preservation of its pop culture. On sports, we will follow five policy objectives of continue to promote sports in the community, promote elite sports, promoting Hong Kong as a center for major international sports events, enhancing professionalism in sports and developing sports as an industry. To encourage more young people to take part in sports, we will work with the sector, schools and other sectors to strengthen promotion of urban sports, which are popular among youths, such as skateboarding, sport climbing and breaking. We provide subsidies to those schools and organizations interested in the promotion program for organizing training courses and activities in urban sports. We expect eight thousand students will benefit every year. We are also examining conversion of some floors of Kun Chong Municipal Services Building into an urban sports center to better promote the development of such sports. We're setting up the National Games Preparatory Office for taking forward the organization of the fifteenth National Games, which will be co-hosted by Guangdong, Hong Kong and Macau in twenty twenty-five. We will brief a logical on the relevant work and financial implications. We also announced various measures to further enhance the end-market system last week to support more high-level major international events to be held in Hong Kong. The superstructure works of the Kitec Sports Parks are underway with targeted completion by phases by the end of twenty twenty-four. We are taking forward the implementation of a ten-year development blueprint for sports and recreation facilities to provide about thirty facilities by phases covering sports centers, sports grounds and parks. On tourism, following the full resumption of normal travel between Hong Kong and the mainland as well as the rest of the world, now tourism industry is right on a recovery path. On attracting tourists, the Hong Kong Tourism Board and the government are deepening global promotion through the Hello Hong Kong campaign and will continue to organize and help promote various major culture, sports, tourism events, step-up efforts in promoting mics, provide more incentives to attract visits of international cruises and continue to promote multi-destination tourism in Greater Bay Area. In supporting the trade, the budget has announced providing full guaranteed loans for licensed travel agents and passenger transport operators. We will seek funding approval from FC on the twenty-eighth of April. I hope that members will support the scheme so that the trade can benefit as soon as possible. Hong Kong is a small city with dense population, many places visited by tourists in the vicinity of places of citizens' daily life or work. And recently, there have been tourist activities creating inconvenience in some districts. Together with the Travel Industry Authority, various government departments, so on and so forth, those issues have been managed swiftly and the relevant work will be continued with proper management. I wish to emphasize that the TIA will closely monitor the activities of travel agents and take strict enforcement actions against illegal activities, including coerc shopping arising from zero fare or unreasonably low fare tours. But such activities have not been identified so far. Hong Kong is an open and embracing society with welcome tourists with different backgrounds to Hong Kong to enjoy and to have enjoyable experiences, which will help us tell a good Hong Kong story. On creative industries, we have launched the Hong Kong Asian Film Collaboration Funding Scheme and Content Development Scheme for streaming platforms to subsidize film projects co-produced by filmmakers in Hong Kong and Asian countries and to nurture cross-actual production teams for streaming platform content respectively, facilitating the Hong Kong film industry to enter new distribution markets. We will enhance the Create Smart Initiatives of CSI by adding a new strategic focus, promoting cross-actual, cross-genre collaboration to encourage the creation of diversified and unique creative projects. Through CSI, we will also support the co-production of TV variety programs by local television stations and mainland Asian production teams. We will accept applications from local stations in May twenty twenty-three, so as to approve the first project before the end of the year. Chairman, that concludes my opening remarks. I welcome questions from members. All right. This is a really popular sessions. There are twenty members waiting to speak. We have only seventy minutes or so left for this session. I can only allow members to speak for three minutes each. Let me read out the sequence of members, Mrs. Regina Ip, Mr. Lee Chun Kung, Dr. Priscilla Leng, Mr. Vincent Chang, and then Mr. Adrian Ho, Mr. Andrew Lam, Ms. Nixie Lam, Mr. Michael Tian, Dr. Wendy Ho, Ms. Chan Ho Yan, Mr. Lam Chan Sing, Mr. Ma Feng Kwok, Mr. Charles So Chong, Ms. Lillian Kwak, Dr. So Chang Wing, Mr. Yip Ak Lam, Mr. Yim Kwong, Ms. Judy Chan, Mr. Kenneth Quok, Kenneth Fok, as well as Mr. Kenneth Lau, the last to speak. Mrs. Regina Ip.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm really excited because usually I didn't press the button quick enough comparing to other members. It's the first occasion that I am able to get to be the first in line. I have the, I have two questions about O five-three and O five-four in relation to subventions for film production. There are several, a number of subsidy schemes. I'd like to know the difference between the various schemes, for example, director's succession scheme as well as the other film development initiatives such as the FPFS. Now, I see that there is also a difference in terms of the funding amount. Some received nine million, some only received two million. Now, according to the secretary, through filming productions, we are to support soft, support traditional Chinese culture. In fact, the films such as A Guilty Conscience received eight million box office. So that seems to be a rather bigger amount. Do you consider the box office revenue as well, secretary? There are different policy objectives in relation to different schemes. I'll defer to the PS to take the question. One scheme is called the financing scheme, film production financing scheme. In other words, we act as the investor, we provide financing for the film to be produced. As for other funding schemes, we provide funding support to nurture a new generation of filmmakers, for example, the First Feature Film Initiative and other initiatives. For FFPI, for example, we provide a fixed amount of subsidy. If it's in the tertiary institution group, it's five million dollars. And for the open group, it's eight million dollars per film. Right, if it's financing, that means you're an investor. If a guilty conscience makes a profit, you can take a share of the profit, right? Yes. As for FFPI, is it that the purpose is to nurture a, or the director's succession scheme? The purpose is to nurture a new generation of filmmakers, right? The so-called veterans will take the lead in producing films with younger filmmakers. Secretary, you mentioned promotion of traditional Chinese culture to the world and also instilling in the public sense of belonging to the country. So are these criteria for approving funding? Well, since it's the first time Mrs. Ip is able to get to be the first in line, should be given extra time. On promotion of arts and culture, we need to take into account many factors. As we are the east-meets-west center for international cultural exchange, we need to promote our culture as well, whether it be local promotion or overseas promotion. We need to have regard to the content of the film and the objective of the fund. In the future, we will strive to incorporate as far as possible the elements of promoting Chinese culture. Mr. Lee Chun Kung.
Now, secretary, already had a lot on his plate before the epidemic. Now that we have resumed normal travel with the mainland and the rest of the world, I'm sure that secretary definitely has a busy schedule. Many friends have told me that, especially those overseas, that they are not sure about the happenings in Hong Kong, especially mega-events. And there are also civic arts groups giving performances, dances, dramas at the local level. So will you develop an APP for the purpose of the mainland audience so that in a consolidated manner, mainland audience will be able to receive publicity information about these performances? You can also provide a one-stop service for the audience to purchase tickets and be aware of these performances and events so that they can come to Hong Kong and watch these performances anytime. And about ticket scalping and touting, especially for LCSD sports venues, the situation remains serious. Please tackle the problem, secretary. Another question is that we have a lot of arts and cultural performances taking place at the community level. I want to know whether it is possible to allocate space for the artists and performers to give their performances and showcase artwork at the community level. Three questions, secretary. We spare no effort in our promotional effort. The Hong Kong Tourism Board has also mounted major publicity campaigns targeting the mainland audience. We want to promote our performances and events across the boundary as well. Say, if I am to travel to a country, I will visit the website and see what is happening there. Now, you mentioned developing an APP. For this purpose, we can give it a thought. But then we must not confine ourselves to only arts performances. We can have, for example, sports events and different travel experience programs. We can showcase everything on this platform. Now, if you go to the Hong Kong TV's website, you will find a lot of information. So it is a question of how we can tailor-made our content for different tourists and visitors. We will give it a thought. About touting activities, we are aware of the situation. After the epidemic, many LCSD venues have become available again. We have also introduced measures to tackle the issue. The LCSD will be rolling out the new intelligence venue booking system. I believe this will help tackle the problem. Now, about making space available for the community artists. Say, we do have, we do allow a community artist to give performances outside Shatin Town Hall. One seven oh, one seven seven and one nine seven, these are questions on trees. I'd like to ask further questions on these matters. In reply, one seven oh, according to the administration, two hundred and fifty million dollars will be set aside to engage outsourced horticultural contractors to assist with the daily horticulture maintenance. Now, may I know more about the nature of the work? And please provide a breakdown of this information later. Now, I recently visited Shamshere Port District. And I found a lot of really nice-looking plants strewn in a different public housing estates in the Shamshere Port Districts. It's really a delight. So I'd like to have more details. And then point three of one seven seven, you mentioned the entry requirements of these great staff members. May I know more about the wastage rates of these staff members? Because I have this experience, on one occasion, I was unable to contact any of these great staff, great staff members to check the trees in the housing estate. So may I know more about the wastage of these great staff members? Secretary.
A number of government departments are responsible for the management of trees. They have different positioning, but they all come under the Development Bureau. Maybe I'll defer to Mr. Lau from LCSD to take your question. Yes, Director Lau. Thank you, Dr. Priscilla Leng, for your questions. Now, to answer your first question about some two hundred million dollars spent on outsourced contractors, this is part of our day-to-day work. We engage horticultural contractors to check and maintain trees. We have an establishment of two hundred and sixty within our department to take care of trees. But this is not sufficient. That is why at the district level, we also engage outsourced horticultural contractors to assist with our daily horticulture maintenance. And I thank Dr. Priscilla Leng for commanding us on the work in Nam Chong Park and especially the spring blossoms are a delight. We also strive to plant different species so that throughout the year and different seasons, we can continue to enjoy the blossoms. As far as the establishment is concerned, it remains at about two hundred plus. And on a regular basis, we provide training so that they can be equipped with the most up-to-date information. Now, my question is whether you're recruiting sufficient manpower. Mr. Lau. The civil service establishment is set at a particular level. If extra work is to be taken on board, we engage non-civil service posts as well as outsourced contractors. I have two questions on the travel agents. O seven three and one other question. First of all, I thank the Bureau for providing a great clarity in their reply to our questions. I am concerned about the arrangements of group tours. The Golden Week, starting the first of May, will come soon. We want to give our visitors a good experience. So I'd like to know about the hospitality arrangements starting first of May. Because in the previous long weekend, we saw long queues at the BCPs. You should do our best to manage the crowd and there should be supporting measures as well. You should plan ahead. Now, for tourist attractions, can you do your best to make sure that they're open during the Golden Week? Even for, say, museums and other venues that are closed on the, on the certain days. And about the hotel and accommodation, I understand the room prices are high and there is also a shortage of manpower. Are there ways to encourage more to join the hotel industry?
Secretary, thank you. Of course, the fifth of May, Golden Week, is something that the entire travel industry is looking forward to. It will boost the number of visitors to Hong Kong. Still, when lots of visitors are coming at the same time, we need to ramp up our capacity. We have seen some bad experience in Tok Kua Wan and we are working with the travel industry on how to address the problem. The Commissioner for Travel and her team has compiled an estimation concerning the number of visitors to Hong Kong during the Golden Week. Arrangements have been made concerning the receiving capacity of different tourism attractions. Now, we must understand that when a large amount of visitors are coming in the same, at the same time, there is bound to be more people crowding up areas. In terms of arrangements for tourism attractions, the transport system as well as the arrangements for the control points, there will be arrangements in place. The majority of the visitors are visitors under the individual traveler's permit. So we will ensure that there is sufficient manpower to receive the visitors. Now, shortage of manpower is the, is a difficulty faced by many sectors in Hong Kong and we will work together with the travel industry to address the problem. Mr. Adrian Ho, thank you. Question fifty-three, a question by Mrs. Regina Ip. Now, the Film Development Council has seven new members coming on board. So what are the selection criteria for these members? There are concerns over the appropriateness, the suitability for appointing some of the new members to the council because of their background. So I wonder if the Bureau has played its gatekeeping role seriously to ensure that all the members on the Film Development Council would ensure that our film industry is moving towards the right direction rather than resisting the government through film works? Prime Minister Secretary, or Secretary, I will take the question. Appointments of membership to all government advisory bodies or committees would be selected on merits. As I've mentioned, it is not appropriate for us to discuss the suitability of appointing a certain member to a committee because that's confidential. But the philosophy is that these members are at a position to contribute to the work of the committee and they would not be pursuing their personal agenda through their role on the committee. On whether funding would be allocated to film works promoting resistance to the government? Well, we are, we have very clear terms and guidelines. For film works with unsuitable contents or even illegal contents, funding would not be granted. For individual, individuals with ulterior motives, we would not support them. Now, when the Film Development Council gives advice or approve funding, there are sufficient safeguards in place to ensure that the system would work. Now, besides the members on the Film Development Council, our own colleagues would also monitor the operation of the committee closely as well as supervise the allocation of funds. We also play an important role in gatekeeping. We understand that. Thank you. Mr. Andrew Lam.
Thank you, Chair. I would like to follow up on reply number sixty-nine. Now, that's my question. For better leveraging our role as an east-meets-west center for international cultural exchange, would the government provide funding support for its offices outside Hong Kong to create the post of Commissioner for Culture? I'm pleased to learn from the reply that this year, two-point-four-three million dollars have been set aside to create six posts under overseas offices of the government. So two points. As mentioned in the reply, besides the existing establishments, the government will continue to monitor the needs for expanding the establishments of overseas offices. Now, if you are saying that you need to monitor the situation, does it mean that you don't have existing plans to help mainland offices and overseas offices to better tell Hong Kong stories? Secretary.
Thank you. Our mainland and overseas offices have received our support on promotion of culture and arts in Hong Kong. Concerning the work portfolios, whether they should be subsumed under a commissioner, it depends on the arrangements of each office and also the need for expansion of the office for a certain place. It really depends on the individual composition and workload of an office in terms of whether a commissioner should be assigned. Prime Minister Secretary. Thank you. Now, for our overseas offices, very often, they would use culture and arts as a means to promote good stories of our country and Hong Kong. Now, Create Hong Kong also offers a lot of support for them. When there are arts groups performing overseas, they would help in terms of liaison and making arrangements. So there is support for the overseas and mainland offices. However, they would be at a better position to tell us what arrangements we should make. Now, concerning the pop culture festival, the secretary has met in person with the offices to make plans. Thank you. Mrs. Nixie Lam, thank you. One zero one about startup performing groups. Now, every year, in terms of artists and performing groups receiving subsidies, the number are comparable. Oh, but this, this is a bit vague. I've received complaints from some startup performing groups that the success rate of application is low. So can you give us a breakdown for the success rates for application? Especially for startups. In year two thousand seventeen and eighteen, some venues, performing venues were leased to young performing groups under a funding scheme. Now, it is said that there would be a new round of application for applicants. However, there are still existing users having their contracts renewed under the space-sharing scheme for youth. So can you ensure us that there will be new performing groups entering? So can you ensure us that there will be new performing groups entering these venues? And also, my question was related to the attitudes of the performing groups as well. Or rather, the contents of work receiving funding. Many of the works are rather dark. Well, since we are going to tell good Hong Kong stories, we need positive work. So like Mrs. Regina is said, said, can we ensure that the funding is used wisely? But we can't support films imbued with negativity while we want to tell good Hong Kong stories. So it seems a bit contradictory. Secretary?
Thank you. Now, of course, we want to promote our fine Chinese culture and tell good stories of Hong Kong and the country. We also want to nurture positivity in society through promotion of culture and arts. However, our culture is a very diversified one. As long as it is not in breach of any law, including the national security law or disseminating anti-government messages, we would be flexible. Of course, it is, I hope that our arts practitioners would take social responsibility and help promote a positive attitude in society. Mr. Wong, please be brief. Concerning application by startup performer groups, we do have new applicants receiving funding every year. But there are difficulties sometimes. That's why in last year's policy address, additional resources were allocated for the application by new artists. Can you give me the breakdown after the meeting? Mr. Wong, any actual figures? Well, I think it is mentioned in one of the replies. Let me look it up. Mr. Michael Tian.
Thank you, Chairman. Secretary, my question is about two hundred, two zero two. Now, it tabulates the source of funding from the NSAs. The majority of it is from the government. That is public money. Now, the government is saying that the government doesn't want to intervene in the operation of NSAs and also that there should be separation between politics and sports. Of course, that must be right. However, we are spending so much money and there is great hope from the public. But you are delegating all the work to the Sports Federation and Olympic Committee of Hong Kong, China. So it may become a kingdom within itself. Now, in the past, many incidents were handled completely by the Sports Federation and the Olympic Committee. I'm not saying that it is already a kingdom within itself. I'm just saying there is such a risk. Now, when the Bureau was set up, the secretary promised that you would improve governance of NSAs and you would meet in person with each of the NSAs. So there was no separation between politics and sports right off the bat. Now, the recent incidents were mostly caused by the playing of the wrong national anthem. The Ice Hockey Association has taken responsibility. An explanation may be due from them. Now, one of the safeguard to prevent such a mishap is the link or a hyperlink provided by the Olympic Committee. But it seems that organizers overseas fail to use that hyperlink. I wonder whether the Olympic Committee should take some responsibility as well. Well, I ask these two questions, not to pick fights. I don't know anyone from the Ice Hockey Association and I'm not interested in taking side. I just want to know that from the points of governance or corporate governance, who will be the one to monitor the monitors?
Secretary? There are two questions. First, about subventions to NSAs and sports organizations, the LCSD has seesight as the role of overseeing the whole mechanism of approving the funding. And every year, NSAs are required to submit audited accounts to LCSD, which has the authority of conducting random checks. On governance issues, funding has been set aside for the Sports Federation and the Olympic Committee, SFNOC, to conduct a study on improving governance and selecting elite athletes in NSAs. Very soon, the study will be completed and NSAs will follow up on the study findings. Dr. Wendy Hong. Secretary, perhaps this suggestion of mine goes beyond your portfolio. Earlier, I talked to the Permanent Secretary. I think that we should promote creative industries, art, culture, sports in Hong Kong through our advantages in the financial sector. At the moment, there is a lack of in attracting fun, uh, funding or financing through these sectors. These sectors mostly rely on government funding. Now, using the principle of equity, one-off grants are provided and there is no sustainability in terms of supporting the organizations. The Silk Road from a historic point of view was created not because of funding from the government. So I think it is key to leverage on our advantages of the financial sector. And I think we should reassess the capability of the financial industry in providing support in this regard so that we can form an integrated system combining the advantages of the financial sector and the arts, culture, sports sector, sectors. For example, we can have venture funds, angel funds, VC funds, so on and so forth to promote the development of arts, culture, sports and creative industries. For example, we can have art tech, create tech and immersive technology. These are technologies combining technology as well as arts, culture and creative industries. So we can deploy information technology to nurture startups in UK and Taiwan. We have, there are similar experiences. For example, there is a Creative Industry Council in Taiwan. There is private investment. I mean, this is happening in UK, in Taiwan. The gov-, um, they also take a proactive approach in attracting foreign investors to invest in the creative industries in Taiwan. Now, drawing on the overseas experience, I think that the fund should be set up to encourage private investments into the sectors. Well, Dr. Hong, please keep it short. You need to allow Secretary to answer. Now, family offices are also concerned not only about investment outcome but the impact of their investment. So we can invite family offices to take part in them as well. Now, we have revised the listing rules. We have eighteen A and eighteen C for biotech companies that have not yet made a profit. Will you also allow these companies, startups in the arts and cultural sectors to be listed as well? Please be very brief. I don't encourage members to go beyond the three-minute speaking time limit. I note what Dr. Wendy Hong said in terms of the values to be generated, be it in the financial sector and also say for private investment funds. Investors will have regard to return. So that's, the question is on the prospective return to be generated from these industries. Once we see result, we'll be in a better position to attract more funds into the Hong Kong market. Ms. Chan, I have a question on urban sports. One seven two. Now, we need to promote sports in the community, develop elite sports and have major international sports events. And what is key is sports venues. Now, the government has taken a proactive approach in promoting sports along with logical members. And according to the reply, space will be set aside for the promotion of, the provision of urban sports facilities. But at the district levels, I think that there is an imbalance. Say for skateboarding, four uh, four venues will be set up in Eastern District, Shatin, so on and so forth, but not a single one in Kowloon. But in fact, for the existing skateboarding venues, there's only one available in Morse Park. If you are an enthusiast living in Kowloon, you either go to Morse Park or you should travel to another district. Are you aware of this issue? In selecting the sites for the facilities, what criteria are taken into account? Now, in Japan, they have rooftops and indoor space converting, being converted into footsoil venues. Will you consider more initiatives in the future similar to the conversion of Kun Chong Municipal Services Building so that underutilized floors, um, old markets, the space below foot bridges can be used to provide for venues for urban sports? I'll defer to Mr. Liu to further take your questions. But policy-wise, as long as the venue is available, we will convert it into a space for urban sports facility for youths to enjoy. However, there are always site constraints. On selection criteria, I'll defer to Director Liu. Please switch on the mic. Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Ms. Chan, for the questions. On site selection, the primary principle is whether the location is suitable. Say in Kowloon, upon completion, the Kun Chong Municipal Services Buildings underutilized floors will be converted into a large-scale urban sports centre. Now, instead of just allowing users to use a vacant site, we take a consolidated approach. We will discuss with the training organizations so that more groups and organizations can take part in training. Apart from Kun Chong, we also, we're also considering other suitable venues. Perhaps making use of the district minor works funds. We can make use of the space below foot bridges and other vacant premises. Mr. Lam Chen Singh. I'd like to follow up on the question put by me, reply sixty-four. About helping tourist guides, I understand that the government has allocated subsidies to attract former tourist guides to rejoin the industry. But more importantly, job security and the level of income matter. Tourist guides are required to pay coach drivers and restaurant operators in advance, sometimes up to ten thousand dollars and the travel agents may not reimburse them right away. Now, we helped with some cases to pursue the outstanding amount with the Labor Department. But since it's a payment in advance and not wages, they are unable to get the reimbursement. And this affects the interest of tourist guides in coming back to the industry. Now, sometimes they need to pay a lot in advance to restaurant operators and coach drivers. Otherwise, the, the tourists in the group may be refused entry. They won't be able to have a meal in the restaurant and that creates another problem in the community as tourists are crammed outside the restaurant in the street. However, in fact, the guidelines for the industry provides that tourist guides should not be required to pay an unreasonable sum in advance for the operation of the tour. Now, since we have the newly established TIA, will you be able to tackle this issue, Mr. Shum? Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, member, for the questions. Now, before the epidemic, before the Travel Industry Authority formally introduced measures to tackle issues arising from zero fare or unreasonably low fare group tours, we did see these problems. But the TIA has since taken over the operational matters including operation of group tours and the regulation of tour guides and tour escorts. In relation to issues arising from coerced shopping, zero fare group tours and or unreasonably low fare tours, rigorous enforcement actions will be taken. So far, we have not received any complaint. And under the new regulatory regime, in terms of the source of income of coach drivers as well as tourist guides, the, they should be more secure. Mr. Ma Feng Kuang.
I have a question on one one five. About the establishment of a post dedicated to cultural matters in the ETOs. I put a question to the CEDB in the session, in the session last week. And then, according to them, this matter is overseen by the CSTB and there is a consensus. Without additional resources, the ETOs can also take up the responsibility of promoting our culture. Whereas for the Beijing Office and other ETOs in the mainland, there is a need to create a post for this purpose or to get a sixth additional post to promote our culture. Well, I am, well, I know that for the association in, or the federation in the mainland China, they are tasked with a similar duty to promote Chinese culture. This is the, and I mean, this is the China Federation of Literary and Art Circles. I don't quite understand why, according to the Bureau, there is no need to provide extra resources. Why do you say that the ETOs will be able to fulfill the national mission of establishing Hong Kong as an East-Meast-West Centre for International Cultural Exchange? Whereas for the mainland offices, they find a need to create additional posts. I, of course, I support more posts to be set up for the mainland offices. Whereas for promoting the cul-, our culture in overseas offices, there is no need to create additional posts. Secretary?
Well, the primary response, one of the primary responsibilities of the ETOs overseas and in the mainland is to promote our culture. However, we'll keep in mind the work taken up by different ETOs in deciding the resources to be allocated, such as promoting films. So is it necessary to create a post for each ETO outright for this purpose? Our take is that we believe that there is a greater need to set up an additional post for the ETOs in the mainland for the purpose of promotion. We're not saying there is absolutely no need to create a post, but then we'll keep it in view. We just believe that the existing establishment will be able to help promote the culture. I just want to supplement. I'm not saying that there should be more manpower for each and every office, but if necessary, there should be extra manpower. How do you explain that for the mainland offices, you have additional posts but not for the overseas ETOs?
Chairman, beside increasing the, or expanding the establishments, we have to see whether we have to see whether the existing establishments can cope with the workload. We have to look at the feasibility of the existing establishments before we consider that. Mr Chow Siu Chong, thank you. My own question, one eight zero about lifeguards. According to the reply in year two thousand twenty-two, the number of vacancies of lifeguard in the civil service has reached two point four eight percent, three times higher than two thousand twenty-one. And the attrition rate in two thousand twenty-two has reached one point nine two percent, six times higher than two thousand twenty-one. Now, because of that, in year two thousand twenty-two, there were respectively twenty-seven and twenty-four public swimming pools and public beaches were closed or partially closed. Now, does the government have any measures to train up more lifeguards and retain the existing lifeguards? Or there is a chronic shortage of lifeguards in the civil service establishment? So would you consider reviewing the structure of this grade? Thank you. Now, in paragraph three, in the reply, we have listed out some measures we have implemented to address the chronic shortage of lifeguards. Now, this is the first year that we failed to fill up all the vacancies of lifeguards. Now, there are several factors. It may be due to the general shortage of labor in Hong Kong. The situation exists for many grades, not just lifeguards. And also, last year was the first year that a shortage in lifeguards reveal itself in the civil service. Now, we need to review whether we should conduct another review on the grade structure because of persisting shortage. Like we have mentioned in the replies, we will do our best to train up more lifeguards. And one must remember that the nature of lifeguard is seasonal. We have to consider that there may be an oversupply of lifeguards for some seasons. But we do appreciate that in the short run, there may be a shortage of lifeguards. We will roll out measures to attract and retain lifeguards. And in a few years' time, we will look at the situation and consider whether a great structural review is due. Thank you, Ms Lillian Kwok. Thank you. I also like to follow up on the previous question of Mr Chow Siu Chong. In question two zero five, I've also asked the same question. Now, in your reply to Mr Chow Siu Chong, the secretary said that there were some partial closure of swimming pools and beaches because of shortage of lifeguards. However, in two thousand twenty-two, you need some one thousand four hundred lifeguards. However, there are one hundred, there are one thousand four hundred and sixty-one lifeguards employed on a permanent basis. So the shortage isn't a lot. So I think there is a contradiction here. Now, two zero three about new sports. The government intends to promote new sports in society because they are very popular across different age groups. Now, in the five hundred and eighty-four million dollars spent on promoting new sports, only zero point three percent would be allocated to the eighteen eligible sports organizations. Isn't that a bit low? And should you relocate, reallocate existing resources to help these sports organizations to promote new sports? Now, two zero four. In year two thousand twenty-two, concerning the books in public libraries, there are, you said there were sixty, some sixty-four thousand books fewer. So I ask whether some of them were removed because of the, because of being in breach with the national security law. Now, you said sometimes these books may be withdrawn because of age, dereliction, or other reasons. Well, I wonder whether some books were removed because of national security reasons, and I want to know the actual number. If you don't have that figure, it doesn't mean that you haven't removed any books because of being in breach of the national security law. So three questions, Secretary. Chairman, this question, two zero four. In part D, we have stated the following. Well, actually, Ms Lillian Kwok would like to know the actual number of books removed because of NSL breach among the sixty-four thousand items removed. Well, when we decide to remove a book, we do not keep record of the reason of removal. So when a book seems to be problematic, or if we receive complaints that the book may be problematic, it would be taken down shelf first, and then we would look at the book closely. If it is problematic, we would remove it. If it is fine, then it would be put back on shelf. So it is difficult to answer you how many books were actually removed because of that, because that is an ongoing process. Mr Li. On new sports, I think you don't have to focus on lifeguards. Well, on new sports, we have just, we have just completed the two-year-long funding scheme. That is a pilot program, so we need to review the results of the funding scheme. Well, in the second year, we have raised the funding cap from one hundred thousand dollars to one hundred fifty thousand dollars for each organization. Many of these new sports are still in an infant stage, so we want to ensure that public money is wisely spent. We have a committee for monitoring the efficacy of the scheme. If necessary, more, more funding would be allocated to the scheme. On lifeguards, we don't have a shortage of lifeguards in the civil service. The shortage mainly refers to the to some of these seasons. Dr So Chang Wei, thank you. My question is zero zero seven from Mr Chen Shih Hong about the Kaidak Sports Park. Now, this is a very funny issue. Many members ask about the trans, traffic, traffic or transport supports for the Kaidak Sports Terminal or Kaidak Sports Park. Now, the Palace Museum and the Empress Museum are already up and running, and I have had personal experience on the difficulty to get there. The public light bus routes do not run until late. And also, there are very few car parks. There are only thirty public parking spaces for the Palace Museum. So the resources spent on ancillary transport facilities simply do not match up with the mega-scale projects. There are lots of leisure space and there are lots of R and B, F, F and B in the area. It is a prime site. It is some four million square feet in size. The view is supreme and some twenty-one point six billion dollars have been spent on the project. And still, the cost, there is a massive cost overrun. But with such a poor transport network, I think it really doesn't match up to the massive amounts of resources spent on it. Many, you are encouraging people to come, but there are simply not enough parking spaces. So in terms of addressing the accessibility problem in the West Kowloon Cultural District, what will you do? And will you consider increasing transport resources for the districts? Now, we don't have a lot of visitors from the mainland at this moment. What if they come flocking in? Secretary, thank you. The member mentioned the transports of West Kowloon District, West Kowloon Cultural District. Well, on some days, there are congestion. Now, actually, there are stations of the XRL and the West Rail Line nearby. And also from the Seaqure Center, there are signage directing visitors to MTR stations. Of course, the West Kowloon Cultural District does not situate rights above MTR stations. But still, there are accessibility program being taken forward as present. So we will work together with the WKCD Authority in identifying some solutions. Thank you. Mr Perry Yu, thank you, Chairman. This is my own question. One five one. This is about the plight faced by the hotel industry. Now, from the reply, we can see that it is estimated that in year two thousand twenty-three, there will be some ninety thousand and five hundred forty-two hotel rooms compared with some eighty, eighty-four thousand hotel rooms back in two thousand nineteen. The number has increased by some six thousand four hundred thirty-five. Well, I wonder if the secretary remember that we met in the middle of last year together with the hotel industry. There were concerns about the serious shortage of hotel manpower after the resumption of cross-bunchary travel. Now, if you look at the change or the increase in hotel room number, and also the, before the epidemic, there were some thirty-eight thousand full-time hotel staff. Last year, the survey told us that there was a shortage of thirty thousand, thirty percent of manpower. That was excluding the newly added hotel rooms. So you can see how serious the manpower shortage is. Now, you told us that by middle next year, there will be concrete measures on importing hotels, labor. Well, I wonder whether the manpower projection or survey for the hotel industry has been completed yet, and when will that be, when will the findings be available? When will we have measures to help us? Secretary, we have been maintaining a close dialogue with the hotel industry as well as Mr Perry Yu. We have a firm grasp of the figures. We know the projection and the statistics compiled by the hotel industry, and we will sure, we will be sure to make reference to them. We admit that there is a shortage of manpower in many sectors, as we have mentioned on many occasions. Besides hotel and tourism industry, there are also shortage on the front line of the catering industry and the retail industry. So we are looking for solutions to help different sectors in Hong Kong. It is quite difficult to single out a single industry. There are industries where the work nature are very similar. Say, for example, there would be a lot of interaction between the catering and the retail industry. Thank you. Mr Yin Kong, thank you. One four nine, concerning KPIs for mega events in Hong Kong. Now, the government said that in terms of the number of visitors, the lineup of participating performers, athletes, or speakers, publicity value, satisfaction level of attendees, et cetera, there would be KPIs. However, you haven't mentioned safety coefficients. Well, last year in Korea, there was a massive tragedy in Halloween, and it caused the life of some three hundred sixty people. Now, I hope the government would set up safety coefficients or safety targets depending on the scale of events.
Secretary Gao. Safety is of paramount importance. Safety is a basic requirement. It is not to be graded. It's not on a relative scale. It is a fundamental requirement that must be met. So in terms of the design of venues, and in fact, for some events, I don't quite recall this name in, in Chinese, but it's called a public entertainment, public place entertainment license. Safety requirements are stipulated as a licensing condition. But anyway, we can go back and give it a thought as to whether we can make safety as one of the indicators. I just want to explain that safety has always been a basic requirement. It's not an indicator per se. But of course, we can go back and give it a thought to whether we can make it an indicator as well. Next, Ms Judy Chan. Thank you, Chairman. I have three questions. First, oh oh five. A question I put on a Symphony of Lights and the expenditure of the show. To be frank, when a Symphony of Lights was first introduced, many people were excited. Now, the show has gone on for many years without any new elements. Now that we have a large-scale promotional campaign called Hello, Hong Kong, I want to check its effectiveness. Of course, we're unable to gauge the effectiveness in the past three years because it has been suspended. But of course, no visitor will come to Hong Kong simply to view the Symphony of Lights. It's just a bonus. But the annual expenditure is six million dollars. When the economy is not going so well, shouldn't we spend money on other areas where it's worth to attract tourists? The other reply is oh one four. A three-year cultural and heritage sites local tour incentive scheme has been implemented with six hundred million dollars allocated. This scheme has a very good objective. It's a three-year scheme, but four months after it was first introduced, only thirty, three hundred and thirty thousand dollars have been used benefiting around one thousand six hundred people. So have you overestimated the effectiveness of the scheme? And can you explain how you're going to spend the remaining balance of the six hundred million dollars in the rest of the three-year period? Another question is on urban sports. The administration is going to promote urban sports. But if we take a look at the annex, I see that a lot of entries are related to basketball courts for skateboarding. For skateboarding venues and dance rooms, I see fewer, much fewer entries. If we don't have sufficient venues, how can we promote urban sports? Secretary, a symphony of lights. Chairman, if we take a look at the last paragraph of the reply, you will see that we have. Ask um, our tourists what they think about the show and the, and overall satisfaction rate is high. Of course, uh, the novelty and excitement wears off after some time, but if you're a visitor seeing it for the first time, you may feel differently. But on a regular basis, we do consider whether there is a need to add new elements to the show. For the second question, I will defer to the commissioner. Third question on venues. Indeed, when we promote new urban sports, we may not at the initial stage have sufficient venues. But first of all, we need to um, build. Um, critical mass of users. If we go the other way and provide venues first, many venues may left, I, may be left idle. So we work in um, pe- on these two matters in parallel. Commissioner, the purpose of the incentive scheme is to encourage the. Industry to develop more local tourism products. When it was first introduced, we already expected that the pickup would be quite slow. At the same time, we also have another scheme for the sector to apply to run green and eco-tourism. Uh, tours. This scheme will come to an end very soon and by then wins visage and the increase in the number of applications under the cultural and heritage tour incentive scheme. Next, Mister Kenneth Falk. I thank the Bureau for the detailed replies. In the interest of time, I have only one question. I won't go further. And that's a question on C S T B O four three, a question that I submitted. In part B, I understand the government will earmark one hundred million dollars for attracting more mega events. Now, this is a good deed because at the end of the epidemic, we're able to organize mega events to attract more visitors. One hundred million dollars seem to be a big amount. But taking the Greater Bay Area perspective, we should, we should make some comparisons now. Say for our neighboring city Macau. The six state-owned enterprises have committed that in the next ten years. The investment in the non-gambling industries will be huge. One, uh, fifteen billion from N, MGM. And then Galaxy seventeen billion and then um, Venetian and. The other operators as well. Now, I'm not trying to make a. A similar comparison here because after all, these are private enterprises. But is it possible that you set up something uh, like a matching fund because. Many mega events will take place in Macau and many large co- um. Many casino operators will be spending a lot to upgrade their facilities. Uh, in fact, many of my friends will be coming to both Hong Kong and Macau. Isn't it uh, a great opportunity to um. Attract visitors for Hong Kong as well, because it is also a state mission for us to be better integrated with Macau. Secretary. Collaborating with other Greater Bay Area cities. Is a major direction for the development of the arts, culture and sports industries. Different places have the distinct characteristics, like the honorable members said, a lot of major events will take place in Macau very soon. Uh, together with major performances. In other cities in the Greater Bay Area and in Guangdong Province. They also possess tourism resources and. Distinct characteristics. That is why we wish to promote multidestination uh, tours because after coming to Hong Kong. Tourists can go to Macau as well as other G B A cities. Likewise, visitors to Macau can also come to Hong Kong. And enjoy a unique experience in Hong Kong that they cannot find elsewhere in the Greater Bay Area. That is why we should continue to discuss uh, with Macau on uh, further collaborations. Last member to speak in the special finance committee sessions. Mister Kenneth Lau. I'm happy to be able to have a go. Uh, I want to follow up on O seven eight. Um, now, the establishment, uh, I mean, the Create Smart Initiative was established in twenty oh nine with a total of three billion dollars injected. And then it, three hundred million dollars in twenty oh nine, three hundred million in twenty thirteen, four hundred million in twenty sixteen and. One billion in twenty eighteen, another billion in twenty twenty one to support the development of Hong Kong's creative industries. These are not small sums of money. I want to know details of the, uh, of where the subsidies go. For example, in twenty twenty one, one mil- billion dollars. Uh, were provided. Can you tell us what industries and what startups uh, had received the support? Mister Wong, the permanent secretary, can take this question.
Yes, it covers a lot of projects. At the end of each year, we have the uh, Business and Design Week. This is an annual event. This is one of the uh, major events for the design industry in the region and around the world. And I, well, in fact, uh, in the replies to other questions, we have. Made a list of major events. I'm able to retrieve this answer now. Perhaps I'll tell Mister Lau later. Anything to add? Uh, I can't locate the reply zero number, but I have a question on films. Members ask about support for the filming industry as well. It seems that we have achieved success. We have won numerous awards. And the secretary. Should give more support. Um, I understand there are schemes to support the production of films, uh, and also films on streaming platforms. We have. Major investors in Hong Kong films. However, these films are rarely produced in Hong Kong. Is it because we do not have tax rebate or tax credit in arrangements in Hong Kong? I just read from the news that Thailand has done a lot in promoting uh, filming production. From zero to one. They now have a long queue for the subsidy. The Hong Kong government should also give greater support for films to be produced in Hong Kong. And this can be done by way of providing tax credits. Because I see great potential in Hong Kong. We have the talents ready. They are yearning to produce films here. More financial support should be given. What should be conducive to promoting the filming industry as well as economic development in Hong Kong? Secretary. We consider. Different options of promoting the development of films in Hong Kong, such as the Film Development Fund, F D F and other uh, programs. Other places may offer rebates and tax concessions. But we also need to have regard to the differences in the tax regimes in different places. Now, the rebates may look attractive in some places, but their tax rates are relatively higher. Uh, we will consider effective incentives to be introduced in Hong Kong. I also like to take this opportunity to answer Miss Nyxie Lam's question. In fact, uh, in C S T B one one eight, she'll be able to find the information she wants. If need be, she can uh, ask us for further information. Yes, I relate this uh, through the secretary to Miss Lam. The mic is not on. Uh, the other question is in O nine eight. Right, Mister Lau, do take a look. The Finance Committee has completed uh, the consideration of the draft estimates. And we have successfully held twenty-one sessions. I thank the government departments and bureaus for your participation. And let me remind members that the Appropriation Bill twenty twenty-three will resume its second reading at the council meeting of the twenty four, sixth of April this year. That ends the meeting here. Thank you.